The second half of our morning session, or our second morning session, or our first session of the early afternoon, or however you want to say it. But most importantly, it's the last session of the summer study session, which is bittersweet. We all wish it could go longer, but some of us might be anxiously expecting the end. The successful completion, how about that one? So we've obviously had a long trip here from pre-revelatory evolution and culture through the days of Dalmatia in Melchizedek. Obviously, I think we've learned so much, even those who were anxiously preparing and studying for some aspect of his wonderful mission and guardianship of this planet, both before he was here in the flesh, while he was here in the flesh, and afterwards, and still today. We've all learned an incredible amount and are very thankful and thankful to him and all the other personalities who have been involved and might even be with us or watching us. And, you know, so we thank them and honor them and hope we are living up to some of their trust and faith in us. And so we came up through, talked about Michael, we talked about the Urantia book, we talked about our mission, how it is different, but yet still teaching those same truths, but with new and better tools, Derek's presentation last night, which was so amazing. And so now we're going to turn to the future again and engage in a little bit of what is the Urantia community's favorite topic. Are we on the brink? What's next? Now, yesterday I said that the speakers were getting younger. And they are. No, so, and you know, in the Urantia culture, if you say someone is young in spirit, like you might in, you know, it means in popular culture, it means that they're still youthful inside their old body, right? And so, you know, we don't, I mean, that's definitely true for an ex-speaker, but we don't, we're not, she's not here because she's a young or immature spirit. She is here for us and has been here for us because she is a very evolved spirit and has demonstrated that to us through her personality and through her, you know, as she's passed by this organization for so many years, led this organization for so many years, inspired and asked so many of us to follow her. And I don't know anyone who's been disappointed or regretful at making that decision. So of all the speakers who haven't needed an introduction, she truly doesn't need my introduction the most, but let's welcome Paula Thompson.
Hey, everyone. Haven't we had a wonderful time? Oh, my gosh. It's just been such a slice of light and life. And aren't we blessed that we get to do that? You know, on this planet, we get to have a slice of light and life. For these weekends, we come together and inspire each other and talk about this revelation and talk about the future and talk about God and Jesus and Melchizedek and angels. And we believe this. We know it. We have faith in it. So this comes by way of, well, first of all, let me say thank you to Tim, thank you, Metab, thank you, Sue Snyder, or I say Snyder, Susicum. Thank you, Derek. Thank you, Jeff. These, you guys have done a wonderful job. Thank you, music crew, Christina, all of your lovely, Sally, you guys are awesome. I know how hard this is and how much energy you put out. So all my heart goes out to all of you and my deepest gratitude. Thank you. Thank you. And Jackie, oh, my God, and Jackie, the star, the education chair. Thank you for stepping up, my dear. David would be so proud that he would say, I did that. And he would take full credit, and he should, you know? Bless his heart. So this comes by way of a call to action, my friends. And I hope it doesn't come off as negative because it's not intended to be that way. It's a call to action. It's what's next. And a little bit, a little personal story about me. I almost died in 1991. I had a silent but deadly killer called granulosa cell ovarian cancer. And granulosa cell tumors grow silently, and then one day they just break open and start to bleed. And I was halfway between my home in Alamosa, Colorado, on a road trip with my family when this happened to me. And I didn't know what the heck was happening. And sadly, no one else did either. And it was through just a strange odyssey that they had to do an emergency surgery to save my life. And I know I actually died. My husband called me back. And they had to do an emergency surgery to save my life. And then I was facing multiple surgeries for hysterectomy and all of these things. And I said a prayer to Jesus. And I told him, you know, master, I'm not afraid. I had a 16-year-old and a 13-year-old, and they were already half orphans. My husband Glenn was their stepdad, and I know he would never have let them down. But it was very challenging. And I told the master, I'm not afraid to die. I'm not afraid to come and meet you. Are you kidding? I'm not afraid of all of the beautiful things that you have in store for me. But I get this feeling that there are beings all over this universe who would absolutely love to have the chance that I have, to be here on this world right now with this revelation, to be the ground floor of this new epic on Urantia. So if you don't mind, I'd like to stay. And in fact, I'll stay 10,000 years if you want me to. And I almost, I think about that now, and I think, okay, master, I know I said it. I said it. And, you know, I don't know what that entails, but I really am looking forward to seeing all of our friends. And wasn't it great to see them all from 2017? I got really chucked up because they were here with us last time, and now they're gone. But they're up there. And you know that old song, "If there's a rock and roll heaven," you know they have a hell of a band? Well, if there's a rock and roll Urantia group, and I'm sure there, if there's a heavenly Urantia group, you know they have a heck of a conference going on up there. So they celebrate with us, and I know they do always. And so let me also take this opportunity to thank our brother, Makaventa. Thank you for being with us here, Makaventa. We know you're here. This is all about you. And thank you, Jesus, for being here with us, Michael. Thank you, mother. Thank you, all our unseen friends, for being with us all the time and helping us get to this most difficult planet. As Mo likes to say, it's a tough neighborhood. So, oh, I've got to get my glasses. So are we on the brink? You know, that great quote, "We're quivering." Can you guys hear me okay? I feel like I'm on a short leash, so. We're, yeah, you are. We're quivering. And do you ever get that feeling when you hear that term, "We're quivering"? What does that mean? It's like teetering. And I get this vision mentally. We're on, we're on an edge. We could go one way or the other. Right? That's the feeling I've always gotten. And so, you know, we want to kind of nudge it to go the downhill run. We don't want to slide back. So that's kind of what this is about. It's a call to action. I believe that the Urantia book is, in fact, does in fact have an emergency aspect to it. And that is, it is, there's a decided sense of urgency that I get and I've always gotten when I read it. I get this sense because clearly the book provides practical solutions to so many of the pressing problems and critical problems we're facing right now. And that becomes more and more apparent to me as we go on down the road with this thing. The Urantia book, let me progress here. What's the urgency? The Urantia book assures us, well, it tells us that maintaining the light of truth on Urantia was an emergency that gave rise to the third epical revelation. And I know I'm not alone, and I'm not the only one who feels that the fifth epical revelation could be also an emergency revelation. I would speculate that the bestowal of Jesus Christ, Michael, also had an emergency nature to it as well. The book assures us, and I love this, these are two promises from Jesus. And of course, it does this throughout the whole book. It assures us that we will make it to light and life. I can't tell you how much that meant to me as an idealistic 20-year-old who had a broken That meant so much to me. And it has that fervor, that joy in that revelation has never gone away, that we will make it to light and life. It points to this in many places, but Jesus especially gives us some prime examples. He said, "Happy are the meek, for they shall inherit the earth." He didn't say they might. He didn't say maybe they will. Who knows? He said, no, they're happy because they shall inherit the earth. He also said, "No matter what blunders your fellow men make in their world management of today, in an age to come, the gospel which I declare to you will rule this very world." These are promises from a creator's son, my friends. If these promises aren't good, no promises are good. We can take these promises with us and have absolute faith in them. The question for all of us then becomes, how will we get from where we presently are to where we're going? How will we get from here to there? When I ponder conditions that existed when the Urantia book came through to our world, I always consider the 20th century in general and recall the life of my own paternal grandmother, May. Yes, May is named after her. Like most human beings, to live in the 20th century, her life was typical and unprecedented. May was born in 1892. She crossed the prairie in a covered wagon. For thousands of years prior to May's birth, human beings got along in pretty much the same way. They worked the land to sustain their lives, and they either walked or made use of strong, intelligent animals to get where they had to go. Certainly having wagons with wheels helped. Around the time of May's birth, the human condition changed dramatically. Her life, 90 years, her life of 90 years witnessed the flowering of the age of industry and invention. She crossed the prairie in a covered wagon and lived to see men walk on the moon. And that happened in one life, the span of one human life. I have always felt that the revelation came because of this unprecedented progress. I also think the presence of the mighty revelators accelerated the progress. That was probably one of those things that they couldn't, they knew it was going to happen, but they had to do it. I believe their very presence affected our world in ways far beyond what we can see or read in our book, in our beloved book. I could expand on that, but I won't. You can find evidence of their work all over the globe, suffice to say. If you look for it, you'll find it. It's there. The Urantia book was like their keynote address. But they likely had a hand in many, many other worthwhile human advancements. Some come to mind, The Big Blue Book, Unity Church, Science of Mind, Mary Baker, Eddie. But it wasn't just in the United States. Things were happening in that timeframe all over the world. And I like to think, gosh, they were here, they were authors, they were presenting papers in the Urantia book, but while they were not serving in that capacity, they went and did other things. And if we look for those other things, wow, they made an impact on our world. And it wasn't only in religion, it was in science and philosophy as well. And so that's kind of a favorite thing for me to look for evidence, the evidence of their work. But we get to this, you know, my grandmother's life leads me to, it illustrates perfectly that science and industry has brought humankind a very, very long way in a very short time. But the book also tells us there's an inherent danger in such velocities. This quote from Paper 11886, and interestingly enough, a lot of Urantia book readers are buzzing about this one right now. And I always look for the signs of the spirit in our movement. The spirit leads us, and if we all start talking about something at the same time, it's a real good indication that they want us to pay attention. "The slowness of evolution, of human cultural progress, testifies to the effectiveness of that brake, material inertia, which so efficiently operates to retard dangerous velocities of progress. For when culture advances over fast, when material achievement outruns the evolution of worship wisdom, then does civilization contain within itself the seeds of retrogression? And unless buttressed by the swift augmentation of experiential wisdom, such human societies will recede from high but premature levels of attainment, and the dark ages of the inner regnum of wisdom will bear witness to the inexorable restoration of the imbalance between self-liberty and self-control. I can't help but wonder what they are planning in this regard." I don't have any more insight to it than anyone else. I think they're going with the flow somewhat. We're, you know, first they broke the mold, then they made us. We're an unusual group with unusual challenges. Perhaps Urantia book is that swift augmentation meant to enhance worship wisdom and mitigate our dangerous velocities. Obviously, the fifth epical revelation's mission is more complicated than that of any other epical revelation. This is true not only because our modern lives have become so complicated by technology, especially communications, but also because the FER, the fifth epical revelation, must synthesize, illuminate, and clarify the mission of all the other epical revelations, and especially the fourth. Gee, you know, we have one paragraph, one couple sentences about Melchizedek in the Bible. We have 33 days of Jesus's life in the Bible. These are epical revelations. It really shows you the import of this amazing revelation that we have. Hey, don't you, shout out to John Byron. I mean, wherever you are, John, up there in heaven, thank you so much, because I have seen these very graphics several times this weekend, and it's been wonderful to see them, John's Five Epical Revelations. "It's very likely that every revelation since the Edemic Default has been an emergency of sorts. Given that one epical revelation always prepares the way for the next epical revelation, considering the unusual circumstances, how could anything that happened after the Edemic Default not be urgent? Just the speed at which the last three epical events have occurred should give us pause." It's a quickening, and it may not be quick for us, 1,000 years, 2,000 years, but for them, they're turning up the heat. And they tell us, you know, this one they expect 1,000 years. So they even give us a timeframe, right? And I, please forgive me, because I know you've seen these same quotes about five times this weekend. You know, it goes back to what I said, the spirit is moving. So they probably want us to really get this point, because we plenary speakers didn't coordinate with each other, and we all picked some of the same quotes, which should tell you something. Consider these statements concerning the mission of Makaventa and the third epical revelation. "Revealed truth was threatened with extinction during the millenniums which followed the miscarriage of the Edemic Mission on Urantia. Though making progress intellectually, the human race was slowly losing ground spiritually. About 3,000 B.C., the concept of God had grown very hazy in the minds of men." That concept of God, wow, that's all important. It seems that revealed truth and our concept of God were vitally important at that time. Are they any less important now? Perhaps they are even more important. "They knew that Michael would be making a startling revelation." Oh, let me back up. "The 12 Melchizedek receivers knew of Michael's impending bestowal on their planet, but they did not know how soon it would occur. Therefore they convened in solemn council and petitioned the most highest of indenture that some provision be made for maintaining the light of truth on Urantia." God bless them. What beautiful big brothers we have. They came to the rescue, the first responders of the universe came to the rescue. They knew that Michael would make a startling revelation of God and God's loving nature. And surely, these amazing Melchizedeks succeeded in giving Jesus a foundation to build on. And Jesus provided the revelators, the beloved authors of the revelation, a foundation to build on. It is now up to us to fortify that foundation and to keep it strong by keeping the fifth epical revelation available and relevant. The revelators make this intriguing statement about the 20th century, just 4,000 years after Melchizedek and 2,000 after Jesus. "Mechanical inventions and the dissemination of knowledge are modifying civilization. Certain economic adjustments and social changes are imperative if cultural disaster is to be avoided. This new and oncoming social order will not settle down complacently for a millennium. The human race must become reconciled to a procession of changes, adjustments, and readjustments. Mankind is on the march toward a new and unrevealed planetary destiny." Unrevealed, they're not so sure. It's new, it's unrevealed, we're teetering, which way will we go? Nobody likes change, right? Humanity's in for a lot of it. So strap in, put your best minister's heart on, and be prepared to comfort and acknowledge and give people security and assurance. And they will come looking, I'm convinced of that. "It seems that our intellectual progress is still outpacing our spiritual progress. It's important to keep in mind, the revelators stated this in the early 1930s, before World War II and the atomic bomb." That's when they said that statement. Have we made the economic adjustments and social changes that they said are imperative? Just how dire is our need for the fifth epical revelation? Let's look at what the midwares tell us. I have this theory about them. They've been down here in isolation with us for 37,000 years and more, right? If the universe wants to know what's going on with us, they have some midwares. They're the experts. They're the experts on Urantia and Urantians. Want to know what's going on with Urantians? Ask us, we'll tell you. We've been hanging out with them all this time. We got a handle on it. They spell many things out for us in no uncertain terms, and Paper 195 reads like a warning. The whole darn paper is a warning. They're trying to drive home a point to us. They finally got their chance to talk to us, and they're driving home some points there. And it's an urgent warning at that. "I think the midwares starkly illuminate some of the imperative changes that are needed." Here, for example, are two of their admonitions on modern secularism. "20th century secularism tends to affirm that man does not need God, but beware. This godless philosophy of human society will lead only to unrest, animosity, unhappiness, war, and worldwide disaster." Could they be any more clear? I don't think so. Then they go on to say, "The complete secularization of science, education, industry, and society can lead only to disaster." The Urantia book completely introduces us to the real nature of God, our Father, the same Father that Melchizedek revealed and that Jesus exquisitely refined and demonstrated in his revelation. The revelation of God from the Urantia book is unprecedented. Let's face it, humankind still barely knows Him. It is the truth about God and His true nature that has been at risk all along. It is the truth about God and His true nature that has been at risk all along. Certainly, the arch rebels have never wanted us to know Him. Right? But we humans, especially on this isolated world, must know and fall in love with God. Because only this will bring about our genuine love and belief in ourselves and each other. Our love for God is the cause of our unselfish service to each other. Such brotherly love on Yorancha will harmonize our divergent rivalist interests, races, and nationalisms. Nothing else can. The Yorancha Book paints a picture of normal evolution on normal worlds, so that we can see where we are out of step. We are more than a dispensation behind and in isolation, not just thousands of years, but hundreds of thousands of years. We are largely clueless about the evolutionary history of life on our own world. The fact that we think we are alone in the universe reveals that our feelings of cosmic orphanhood are profound and acute. It is no wonder we have so much doubt and suspicion. Our big brothers and sisters in the universe have the same goal for us that they have for all inhabited worlds, to help us progress from the primitive ignorance of bellicose savages to an enlightened family of God-knowing, brotherhood-loving, service-oriented, and cosmically-conscious mortals. But that is no easy task on our world. I can't imagine it's easy on any world, but it's definitely not easy on our world. Whereas most worlds would evolve through well-defined stages and mass, our world is an evolutionary mashup containing the various stages of human evolution, all occurring at once. This statement seems to illustrate that point. Ancient magic was a cocoon of modern science, indispensable to its time, but now no longer useful. And so, the phantasms of ignorant superstition agitated the primitive minds of men until the concepts of science could be born. Today, Yorancha is in the twilight zone of this intellectual evolution. One half the world is grasping eagerly for the light of truth and the facts of scientific discovery, while the other half languishes in the arms of ancient superstition and but thinly disguised magic. I think that sums us up really nicely. But it, there's hope in that if one half is really searching and reaching, there's something that we can work with there. Yeah. Ironically, our loving universe has sent us a book to help us mitigate these serious challenges. They didn't send us a high-born son or ambassador this time. Now, I gotta tell you, I love Mo Segal. Mo, are you here? I don't, I think he probably already had to leave. He loves to say, "We've done a lot of introductions to the Yorancha Books together over many years." And we get to this part about the Yorancha Book, and he tells people, "Now, they sent us a book." They could have sent another son, but when they, when, when the universe saw what we did to the last ambassador they sent, they couldn't get any volunteers. They didn't send us a high-born son this time. I suppose it makes sense that they would send a book that we tell each other about in the age of communication. We can always go back to it, too. It's always here. It's not subject to oral tradition, right? And the story, like, you know, remember when you used to play phone when you were a kid, and by the time it got to the last person, it was completely garbled, and it didn't make any sense. And what an amazing book, what an amazing book. Most of us here have studied this book fervently for decades. We know this book. We know that it can transform the world by transforming individuals. We know this. Our unseen friends are counting on us. They need us in every way. We are the boots on the ground. The very least we can do is courageously get it and/or its teachings out into the world in every creative way that we can possibly imagine. If there is one thing I know about an emergency, it is that time is of the essence. Every second matters. This book is like an antivenom for spirit poison. It's a life preserver for those who are drowning in misinformation. The following are seven, I, I want to share something with you really quick. Derek and I were at home working in the office, talk about first responders. Talk about courageous loyalty and courage. Talk about having a heart of a lion, which, he is born in August, too, so. We were sitting there working away, I have this big picture window, looks out on the street. Derek looked out the window because his desk sat right in front of the window, and he said, "Holy, that house is on fire." And the house right across the street was engulfed, the whole garage and the tree, there was a big pine tree, all engulfed in flames, completely engulfed. And I said, "I'm gonna call nine-one-one," and he took off running, ran down the stairs, before I could even dial nine-one-one, I see him running down the street to this house. He runs inside, and there's a thirteen-year-old boy in there with a pile of clothes on the floor. And the boy says, "It's all I have." And Derek says, "I'll help you carry it out, but we gotta go now." Everybody got out safely, especially that thirteen-year-old boy. Derek, you've been my hero for a long time, but that cemented it, buddy. He did not hesitate, not for one instant. He ran the moment he saw that fire, ran into that house and got that thirteen-year-old. That's Melchizedek behavior, I gotta tell you. The following are seven stark examples that lead me to believe that the mission of the Fifth Epical Revelation on our world is urgent. There are probably many more you can think of, I'm sure there are, that come to your mind, but these seven, they come to my mind frequently. And I should say, they don't all indicate, "Wow, this is an emergency." Some of them give us very practical suggestions about the low-hanging fruit that we might be able to do something about on this world. Is there a need for sound religion on Yorancha? Paper ninety-nine tells us, "During the psychologically unsettled times of the twentieth century, amid the economic upheavals and moral cross-currents and the sociologic riptides of the cyclonic transitions of a scientific era, thousands upon thousands of men and women have become humanly dislocated. They are anxious, restless, fearful, uncertain, and unsettled. As never before in the world's history, they need the consolation and stabilization of sound religion. In the face of unprecedented scientific achievement and mechanical development, there is spiritual stagnation and philosophic chaos." Wow, that was written before World War Two. Again, you have to remind yourself. Because we've come a long way since then, and we're teetering. Is there a need to overcome materialism on Yorancha? Materialism reduces man to a soulless automaton and constitutes him merely an arithmetical symbol, finding a helpless place in the mathematical formula of an unromantic and mechanistic universe. Gee, that sounds like fun. Let's do that. More stuff, please. You know what George Carlin says about stuff, right? You have so much stuff, and you run out of room, so you get another place, you can have more room for more stuff. Is there a need to overcome secularism on Yorancha? Without God, without religion, scientific secularism can never coordinate its forces, harmonize its divergent and rivalist interests, races, and nationalisms. This secularistic human society, notwithstanding its unparalleled materialistic achievement, is slowly disintegrating. The chief coercive force resisting this disintegration of antagonism and nationalism is nationalism, and nationalism is the chief barrier to world peace. Boy, there's a catch twenty-two. What a conundrum. Yeah, you can really see it. Is there a need to promote peace and trade on Yorancha? This is something that, you know, we see trying to happen, right? The peace of Yorancha will be promoted far more by international trade organizations than by all the sentimental sophistry of visionary peace planning. Trade relations have been facilitated by development of language and improved, by improved methods of communication, as well as by better transportation. That's some low-hanging fruit, I think. Is there a need to establish equality of the sexes on Yorancha? Does that picture not capture that moment? I mean, I looked pretty hard for that one, and I was like, "This is it." She has a she has her megaphone tiny little thing. Brotherhood is impossible on a world. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong quote. Sex equality prevails on all advanced worlds. Male and female are equal in mind-endowment and spiritual status. We do not regard a planet as having emerged from barbarism so long as one sex seeks to tyrannize over the other. Hey, let's emerge from barbarism, there's a thought. I mean, that would be a goal, right? To have them announce to the whole universe, "Hey, Yorancha has emerged from barbarism." Well, we did one really big thing. That also, I think, is some low-hanging fruit. We're so close, we could do it. Is there a reason humans should get to know, understand, and love each other on Yorancha? Brotherhood is impossible on a world whose inhabitants are so primitive that they fail to recognize the folly of unmitigated selfishness. There must occur an exchange of national and racial literature. Each race must become familiar with the thought of all races. Each nation must know the feelings of all nations. Ignorance breeds suspicion, and suspicion is incompatible with the essential attitude of sympathy and love. And they tell us, of course, that's a theme in the book, right? Get to know one another. If you get to know one another, you will fall in love with each other. And no specifically motives and sentiments. And wow, I think that's doable, especially with the internet, especially with Facebook. You know, look at our brother Bill Rokap, he's living in Turkey now. He's Turkish, and they love him. He took that admonition very personally, I think. Do humans need to know about Jesus and why he came here? Well, if we look at that word cloud, where Jesus was the biggest word in the cloud, a full third of the whole book is devoted to Him. But not just that, that part of it, His life and teachings, it's really a book about Him, past, present, and future. There's a reason we need to know Him. He's our Superman, he's our bestowal son. Every world gets one, we needed one really bad. And He came, and He came to show us the way. He modeled for our class, as Errol Strider likes to say. A new and fuller revelation of the religion of Jesus is destined to conquer an empire of materialistic secularism and to overthrow a world sway of mechanic, mechanistic naturalism. Yorancha is now quivering on the very brink of one of its most amazing and enthralling epochs of social readjustment, moral quickening, and spiritual enlightenment. We're quivering, friends. I feel it. I know, my dear friends, I know that the Yorancha Book is more than a lot to take in. I know how overwhelming it can be to learn it, and especially to try and teach it. Or even to imagine that we can do anything about what it says. But I think it behooves us to go many miles beyond the second mile, to get increasingly creative in our outreach and keep making brave and concerted efforts to reach our fellows whom Jesus said, "Languish in darkness and hunger for the light of truth." That quote always chokes me up. Men die searching for the very God that lives within them. You know, and we know about this, we're so blessed. In closing, I offer a quote from the late, great pioneer of systems thinking, Professor Russell Akoff. He said, "Errors of omission, lost opportunities, are generally more critical than errors of commission. Organizations fail or decline more frequently because of what they did not do than because of what they did." Errors of omission. In that vein, our own beloved Bill Sadler once said, "What I pray is that Yorancha, is that the Yorancha Brotherhood will make new and original mistakes." Got it, we got that one. I gotta tell you a joke here. You know about the United Midwares, right? They have their motto, "The United Midwares of Yorancha. What we set out to do, we get done," something along those lines, right? My friend Chris Riggio made up a new one for the humans of Yorancha. He said, "The humans of Yorancha, what we set out to do, we do do." So now you know our, our battle cry. What we set out to do, we do do. So Bill went on to say, "We do not have to repeat the mistakes of our predecessors, and therefore, we should know about their errors, not to sneer at them, but to learn from them. When I, when Bill's saying this, when I look at my service record up there, the most wonderful inscription I could ever see there is" most wonderful inscription I could ever see there is, 'He made new and original mistakes.'" Thank you, Bill. Thank you for that. You know, I, I love, my favorite parable is the Parable of the Talents, and the midware commentary, and I love the midware commentary. I just think it's priceless. And they tell us, you know, "The master of truth will require a reckoning." And what a sorry sight, and that's their words. What a sorry sight. If in that day you say to the master, "Here, master, is the truth you gave me 100 or 1,000 years ago, and I've added nothing. I've allowed no changes to occur in that which you gave me." They go on to tell us that, that ain't gonna fly with the master of truth. That's slothful. I want, you know, in Bill's vein, what he'd like to see, I'd like to be able to hold my head up in that reckoning and say, "Master, I think I went out on the limb for you. I think I gave it my all. I did everything I could think to do to promote your truth on this, on this world. I want to hold my head up. That's my prayer." Bill said this, by the way, knowing that this is how we learn and evolve. It's important. Russell Akoff goes on about that, too. It's okay to make mistakes. That's how we learn. We got to. We've got to try. Little May, when she was in junior high, I walked into her, into her gymnasium, and there was a sign on the wall I'll never forget. Very simple. It said, "You'll miss 100% of the shots you don't take." Wow. That's my new motto. So friends, I have faith that our very own Macha Venemelchizadec, along with our other amazing celestial brothers and sisters, are working beside us on these complicated issues. I know that as we march toward that unrevealed planetary destiny, they march boldly with us. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Paula. I told you, a soul who was inspiring only starts to describe it. And speaking for myself personally, my first conference was last year, which was all on Zoom. So I met a lot of you on Zoom. And there I had the power to mute and unmute. It was, it was great. And, and, and it was, it was, it was wonderful, right? And now I'm, I had the front row seat to see these, these, these people who I, you know, who I asked to contribute, and, you know, they all so graciously jumped to the chance. And to see that life, to see that quivering, to see the personality added a whole nother dimension. For, for me, it was very apparent, given my experience last year. But as Paula said, we have a book. It's a great book. We love a book. We can call it a, a, a living book, but it's not alive until we read it and we do something. We apply our personality to it and share that with others. That's the revelation that it's, if it's on the, it can be a revelation sitting on the shelf, but it might as well not be there, right? So as we're waiting for the next son, we're obvious, we are the sons, we are the daughters, through which this revelation is actually occurring. And if you don't think it's urgent, sure you do, but I put together just a quick couple slides that I'm, you know, subject you to. We're actually not behind schedule, so. I'm really proud of that. Yeah, yeah, I'm trying. I'm trying to fix that, right? So let's pretend that we put the history of inhabited Yorancha, human Yorancha, on the time of one year. So on January 1st, Antonin Fanta. February. March. April. May. Remember, we heard how usually it's not this long, but June. July, something happens. Halfway, we're halfway done, and we're just getting started with the revelations. Oh, Dalmatia. Oh, my gosh, this is great. We're set, right? We've got a plan. We've got commissions. We have, you know, you know, outreach of everything. Couldn't be better. August, super. September, great, great, no problem. Weather starts turning a little colder. Leaves are falling off trees. Sorry to be North American-centric, but, okay. But, uh-oh. October 17th, rebellion. So, all right. Well, it's okay, though. Someone's gonna come fix it really soon. Nobody comes in November. What's gonna happen in December? Surely Adam and Eve are right around the corner. I mean, okay, Thanksgiving, you know, the long weekend, but surely they're, they're coming as soon as they can. December 17th, 3 a.m., and they're gone by 4 a.m. All right. So most of us were asleep.
Yeah, we didn't even, we didn't even miss it.
But that's okay. Surely someone, they'll send someone else really quickly. We have plenty of time. We have, oh, two weeks left, right, right? December 30th, 11 a.m., Melchizedek shows up and spends a nice hour on our planet. So note how they're piling up here. This is the first month with more than one thing on it, right? So who's next? Jesus. 6:45 to 6:50 a.m. on December 31st. Like, well, okay, you know, the whole year's gone. We're, we're trying to, you know, so we might as well start our, our party for the, you know, for, for the end of the year. The Yorancha book shows up at 11:07 p.m., 53 minutes ago from right now. So, you know, Kurt had a nice graph, you know, that, that he's working on, and his showed to the, the spiritual ups and downs, and, and Paula alluded to that, but just, just look at how much this is piling up. Literally the 11th hour. And we can, we can laugh at this, we can talk about it, but our question is, what happens tomorrow and what happens next year? And that's up to us. And they, Paula destroyed the quote, "It's not settling down. We're not gonna go back to another three, four, six-month hiatus. It's gonna keep coming one way or another." All right. With that, I'm turning it over to our wonderful musicians and to give us a final... To give us some final sounds.
Go now in peace, never be afraid. God will go with you each hour of every day.
Sing it with us!
Go now in faith, steps are strong and true. Know he will guide you in all you do. Go now in love and show you believe. Reach out to others so that all the world can see. God will be there watching from above. Go now in peace, in faith, and in love.